Good evening and welcome to the September 24, 2018 edition of the Thousand Oaks Planning Commission. Going to call this meeting to order and ask that you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to our flag.
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and states of America, to which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is.
Thank you. Will the Recording Secretary please call the roll for us?
Commissioner Lanson?
Here.
Commissioner McMahon?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Here.
Chair Nichols?
Yes. Mr. Parker, do you have any written comments, announcements, supplemental packet, or continuances for us this evening?
Thank you, Chair. There were none for any other items on the agenda this evening.
Thank you very much. I saw a late arrival. I don't have any public comments, cards. Does anyone care to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, then we have no public comments and we'll move to the consent calendar. Would the Recording Secretary please state with the consent calendar items?
Consent calendar item for the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of July 9, 2018.
Thank you very much. Either comments or motion to approve the consent calendar? I don't see any buttons or are you just going to do this manually or the button's not working? Oh, Mr. Pletcher, okay, all yours.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting dated July 9, 2018.
Very good. We have a motion on the floor. Any comments, questions? If not, the Recording Secretary please prepare us for a vote. Mr. Newman, are you able to push a button for voting?
Pilot error there.
Fantastic, there we go.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Next, we have public hearings with the Record. With the Recording Secretary, please call the first hearing for us.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A for case numbers PPD 2018-70038, PMW 2018-70252, UUW 2018-70277 to allow encroachment into a 25% or greater slope for the construction of a single-family dwelling, merge two lots into one lot of record, and waive the requirement to underground existing utilities at 385 Skyline Drive. The applicant is John Inselmo.
Thank you very much. And first, I think we're going to have a staff report from our planner, Mr. Will Chua. Mr. Chua, if you care to describe for us the contents of your report.
Good evening, Chair Nichols, members of the Commission. As mentioned earlier, for your consideration tonight is a request to construct a single-family dwelling that has encroachment within a natural terrain exceeding 25% or greater. The other application is to merge the two lots where the project is going to be, the site of the project. And the third request is to waive the requirement to place the existing utilities underground. This is a vicinity map of the project. To the northeast is the 101 freeway. It's about 1,500 feet away from Willow Lane, which is adjacent to the 101 freeway. This project is within an area of the city that has little development. The adjacent lots for the projects are all undeveloped, remained undeveloped. However, last year, the Planning Commission approved a single-family home around this area right here. That particular request was for a single-family dwelling with an encroachment in the 25% or greater slope, which is currently in building plan check at this time. The lots to the north of this project are owned by COSCA. There are single-family homes on the other side of Skyline. And to the north of the project is an industrial area with different uses. The subject lots are part of the Thousand Oaks tract, and there are no previous entitlements that was granted on that location. The two subject parcels are generally rectangular in shape and are both zoned RE13. RE13 means rural exclusive with 13,000 square foot minimum lot size. The lots are 11,325 and 12,196.8 square foot, respectively. These are what we consider legal non-conforming lots because they do not conform with the minimum lot size for the established zone. The terrain on the side generally slopes uphill from the front of the property towards the back. 72% of the combined lots has 25% or greater. That's about 16,900 square feet out of the total of about 24,000 square feet. The Thousand Oaks Municipal Code requires Planning Commission approval for encroachment into slopes, into natural slopes of 25% or greater. There is a power pole at the front of the property, a water well at the front of the property as well. This is a picture of the property viewing from the east, looking west. And this is the power pole that I mentioned earlier. There are lines running along Skyline. And there's also two guy wires, as you can see, that is on the project. And here's another shot closer to Lot 16, which is the other lot, the northern lot. This is the proposed siteland that shows setbacks that complies with Municipal Code. This is the northeast elevation of the proposed residence. The materials will consist of stucco and wood plank siding. The applicant is also considering to install solar roof tiles. The building height will have an average of 20 foot 8 inches average. This is a view from the south or the front of the house as you see it from Skyline. Underneath this is the garage. This is a bedroom, and this is the rest of the house. And this is the view from the left elevation of the property. And this is the rear elevation. The floor plan shows the layout of this two-story, four-bedroom home with a two-car garage. There is a bedroom, which is, this bedroom here goes on top of the kitchen area. And this bedroom here, and this garage, is underneath this bedroom. So it's... The proposed single-family home has a total of 3,530 square feet. It's a California ranch-style home. The homes in the vicinity ranges from about 2,500 to 3,125 square feet. The last one that was approved is around 2,700 square feet. The project is consistent with the precise plan of the site guidelines as to the mass, scale, and height, as well as the materials that's being proposed. The grading plan, this is the grading plan, and let me just point out some locations. The water well for the project is located right here, as I mentioned earlier. The septic tank would be under the existing, the proposed driveway, and there will be two seepage pits towards the rear of the property. There will be retaining walls to support the project and a 15-foot-high slope as well. This area right here and inside these dotted lines right here are the 25, or in addition to the front property, along the front frontage of the property, has less than 25% slope. As for the brush clearance, the fire department requires 100-foot clearance from the finished pad. The applicant will be required, under PPD conditions, to offer easements to adjoining properties so that they can perform the brush clearance off-site. As for the requested lot merger, the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code allows merger of two lots as long as they are held by the same owner. One of the lots is non-conforming to zoning standards where these two lots are actually non-conforming, and one of them is undeveloped. Both of them are undeveloped right now. The merging of the lot will create a lot size that, I mean, a lot that will conform with the Municipal Code's minimum, with the zoning's minimum lot size, and it will result into less structure density. For the requested underground utility waiver, the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code requires undergrounding of existing and new utilities. Section 7-5203 allows waiver of the underground requirement under certain conditions. One of them is the existence of utility lines that supports other existing structures. This project qualifies for a Class 3 exemption in accordance with CEQA guidelines. CEQA, Section 15303 applies to limited numbers of small structures, including a single-family Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission approve PPD 2018-70038, parcel map waiver 2018-70252, and UUW 2018-70277 based on the findings and subjects to the conditions of approval contained in the model resolutions. Staff is available to answer questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chua. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Chua, for your report. On page 2 of the staff report, it states that two nearby properties had permits granted for grading with some cut and fill. And my question is, were those permits, were the nearby residents' approvals, were they similar in scope in terms of the amount of cut and fill? Or is this greater?
I'm sorry about that. The grading is similar in scope for the particular property that I mentioned around this area where the pointer is. This is the one that we brought to you before you guys, last April, I believe, of 2017.
Yes, one was last year and then one was much earlier.
Yeah, that's the Moses project. Yes, and it's very similar. The other one, I don't have the exact details of the grading since it was approved back in the year 2000.
Okay, but that was roughly in line with
Yes.
...the amount of earth movement that we're talking about here?
Yes, and technically in accordance with the sizes of the lot because that was a much smaller lot. So percentage-wise, grading on that was a little bit more.
Okay. While we're on the topic of cutting and filling, I can use your help in understanding the numbers. This is on page 3 of the report, about 2/3 of the way down the page. The statement is that the applicant proposes to move about 8,300 cubic yards. Then the report goes on to say, this is only 344 cubic yards of cut and 394 of fill. Can you help me understand the relationship between 8,300 on the one hand and 300-something on the other?
So what they're doing is they're moving dirt around within the property itself, but they're cutting and they're exporting only a certain amount.
Ah, okay, so the rest stays on the property?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I understand. Thank you. Page 4 of the report, and Condition 28 pertained to brush clearance. And this is really more of a policy question. The question is, since the proximate cause of the need for brush clearance is the applicant's decision to merge the lots and build a house there, why is the responsibility for brush clearance put on the neighbors to do that?
The fire department requires that the brush clearance be performed by individual property owners. Now, for the city, in order to put less burden on those property owners, would require that the applicant offer an easement to the property owners on those properties. If they decline, then they will do their own brush clearance.
And the easement means that the neighbors will have access to their property to do that?
No, that means the property owner will ask for an easement to the adjacent properties so that they can perform the brush clearance on the off-site of this project.
Let me be sure I understand what you're saying. You're saying that the applicant would go onto the neighbor's property and do the clearance?
Yes.
I see, okay. So even though, I don't know whether it's policy or a legal requirement, but even though the requirement is that the neighbors do the clearance, this application is conditioned on the applicant doing the clearances. Do I understand that correctly?
We do not require them to do off-site, I mean, indirectly. What we're doing here is reducing the burden of this construction on the affected parcels so that the brush clearance will be performed by the applicant while the lot next door remains vacant. Now, once that is built, then that will wash out the
Of course, right.
Right, right.
But as long as the lot remains in its current state, you're saying that it's on the applicant to do brush clearance on any neighboring property with
With permission from the property owners, yes.
Understood, okay. Thank you for clearing that up.
If I may, Chair, and
Yes, please, go ahead, Mr. Heer.
And Commissioner Newman. You already obviously hit the note of this dual issue that you have with a property owner who wants to build on their property, and by the location of the structure now raises the 100-foot rule of fire concerns that a neighboring property now might have because of the structure might be within 100 feet of the next-door neighbor's parcel. So as Mr. Chua stated, this possible unfairness, what we're asking for is we're asking that the applicant in the condition go to the neighbor and say, "I'm willing to go onto your property with an easement." And so the mechanism that we're doing is instead of saying, "Oh, I just want your permission to go on your property and do this fuel modification," we're making them do a, offer an easement. So again, for the owner of the adjoining property, it's kind of a helpful thing to say, "Okay, I'm going to have an easement that's strictly for that person to come on their property only for fuel modification a certain time of the year," right?
Right.
And by doing that, it relieves that other property owner that burden that might have with the structure being within 100 feet. That's how we're kind of balance that, with the concern for the fire and safety that everyone should be concerned about. And so we balance those two interests with the fire department's interests, of course, and making sure that there is acknowledgement that we should be taking care of this issue with the structure that's being placed there.
And I think, thank you for that. I think that strikes exactly the right balance between the public safety need that we all have and the unfairness, to use your term, of requiring a neighbor to do something because a new neighbor is doing something on the land. So I think that strikes just the right balance.
Correct.
So thank you for clearing that up. Condition 8, this is Attachment 2, page 3. This is about construction hours and parking. The Skyline Drive is quite narrow with little or no shoulder. I'm wondering if it's feasible and practical to modify this condition to require that construction vehicles and construction workers' vehicles be placed on-site during any work? Because I didn't see any places nearby for construction vehicles to be parked.
Yeah, that's, it's up to the Commission. If the Commission feels it's the best for the neighborhood, then, you know, I'm sure that you can, we can add certain conditions to that effect.
Okay. I mean, if there is an alternative site or staging site or something off-site where that would work, that's, and I'll ask the applicant about this as well.
Maybe Senior Engineer Brad Basil can respond to that. I think there will be enough parking on Willow Lane, correct me if I'm wrong here, for staging
Good evening, excuse me. Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, there's really no room for parking on Willow Lane, so there's, I think most of that's marked "no parking." Well, on Skyline, yes, there's really, you know, Skyline, as you know, is a very narrow street. There's not a lot of parking on there, but I don't really think that it's going to be possible for the applicant to do much of their staging on the property. It's a very small property, and the amount of grading that they're proposing to do on that property, I don't see that they'll be able to do much parking on there. I know with the previous project, the Moses project down the street, that was a concern. And we worked with the applicant, and we said our inspectors were going to be out there. We would be inspecting and making sure that the road did stay open, there was a path, a travel path through there, and they wouldn't be blocking. I think they can pull off the road enough to at least, you know, park single file up Skyline.
Yeah, I mean, and perhaps the solution here is modifying the condition with language saying something about keeping the flow of traffic clear on Skyline or something like that.
Yeah, that will be, that's always part of our permits when we issue grading permits and when we issue, if there's any kind of encroachment permit that has to be issued for this job. That's always part of our permits, that they do have to maintain a travelway through the road. So that's always part of our permit process.
Chair, if I may interject and assist in answering this question. If that's a concern that the Commission has, a condition could be added to the project that require a construction staging plan prior to the issuance of permits for the project. That way, it'll give the applicant an opportunity to find off-site staging or to plan grading in such a way where they can flip the site in half, perhaps, to work on one side while they stage on the other. Something along those lines, but that'll take the applicant some time to figure out. But if a condition was placed on it where that would have to take place prior to the issuance of permits, I think that might satisfy the concern.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. I would agree. I'm not even sure a separate condition is needed, but as you stated, maybe just a sentence added to the existing condition saying that a staging plan is required as part
That would work as well?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, wrapping up, a couple more questions on Condition 18. This is with regard to driveway, how steep driveways can be. Just for clarification, the condition states that the city's maximum for a driveway is 15%, but the staff report says 7%. So which of those is correct?
Well, this is just a description of what the proposed driver would be, and this condition states that you can't go more than 15%. It's just, one is the limit, the other one is what they're actually going to be proposing.
Well, I think the proposal is actually less than
7%, yes.
Than either number.
Yes, so it's just
Right, but my question is, what is the city rule? How steep can a driveway be?
15% for residential?
Okay, great. The last condition question I've got is on, this is Conditions 46 and 47 with regard It's not really a question about the conditions, it's more of a general question, which is, will the runoff, will the construction materially affect the amount of runoff on these properties?
So your question is, is will this increase the amount of runoff?
Increase, decrease, will it change it in a material way?
Not in a major way, it's not going to. This site, obviously, it's going to because now you're going to be introducing impervious features onto the site. PPD, single-family dwellings, they don't have to do detention like a commercial site. It will increase it, but it's very negligible with the amount of increased runoff will be generated from this project.
Okay. And then my final question, again, is in a general sense, and I think the answer to this is yes, but I'd like to get it stated explicitly for the record. In walking around the property, I was struck by the bowl-shaped nature of the surrounding land. And I understand that the application is to scoop out part of that bowl. However, part of the top of the bowl will still be there. And I think, given the brush clearance and other mitigation measures that are being taken, the city is, and the city is satisfied from a public safety standpoint, that were a wildfire to occur, the structure would be protected, that the bowl shape and the nature of the way fires occur in bowls would not be an issue for the structure. Is that, is that an accurate assessment?
I don't think I could answer that. We don't have a fire representative here, so I'm not comfortable to answer that question, unfortunately.
Okay, I mean, it's a concern anytime I see, and this has come up with other applications we've had here, where we're putting structures inside of bowls.
Right, and the farthest we could go, I believe, here is having them comply with the fire department's brush clearance. And that does not guarantee that even with proper brush clearance, that it's not going to catch fire if there's a brush fire out there, so.
Right, right. The last time this came up, I got kind of mixed answers on this point, where during the hearing, I heard, yes, this is 100% compliant with fire department regulations, which it was and which this clearly is. After the hearing, a firefighter told me, this can be really dangerous. You know, he's personally had seen cases where fires go down canyon hills, and especially bowl-shaped hills, very rapidly. And I just want to be sure that, well, of course, there's no guarantee about anything, that every necessary precaution's been taken here.
Yeah, and in addition, I mean, that's the farthest we could do. I mean, and the fire department will require sprinklers on this project as well, so that's the best we could do at this point.
And I will say, Chair, if I may, Commissioner Newman, the fire department, for the record for the public, did review this plan, and there are conditions, beginning with 54 through 58, that have been attached that demonstrate that the fire department reviewed the plans and have put these conditions in there. And I understand that your question might be more of a, you know, there might be this concern that you have with the nature of it. I'm just going to say that for the record, the fire department looked at those plans and how it was going to be built, and I think if they had a, if they thought that they could put some other type of restriction on there, I think they would have done that because they do that quite frequently if they have a problem with a they do that quite frequently if they have a problem with a facility or the project as proposed. Usually with, usually those heights or access concerns, they certainly make the applicant go through a whole process of trying to revamp the plans to meet the code requirements. And so, in this case, I would just say, for the record, that they have these conditions in there, and they have reviewed that aspect of it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And it is good to note that the fire department has signed off on this, and has, has conditions in place. Great. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Chua, for your report. I just had two brief questions. The property, aside from all the unique things we're talking about, has another thing that I noticed when I was there, in that the power lines, or the utility lines, cross the street right at the very end of the property. And I see, obviously, the applicant's looking for a waiver of the underground requirement. I'm assuming to hook up to those lines above. I just wanted to confirm that the existing lines are going to stay intact, they're not going to get more lines added to it that might create a different issue in terms of safety for that road?
No, there is a condition that any new utility is going to be a single-family home will be undergrounded.
Underground, okay, so I thought that we're getting a waiver for that to make it all up?
Yes, the only waiver they're getting is that existing utilities stay above ground.
Okay. Second of all, with regard to the lot description, I understand from looking at the documentation, normally, we would see these lots get the next number in line, but it looks like we're identifying as Lot A. I just wanted to confirm that with you and give an explanation as to why.
That is a standard nomenclature that the surveyors use. Whether there's a second lot is irrelevant. I mean, they cannot use the original track's next number, because the record for that track has already been closed. The other, the other way to, to label it, depending on the civil engineer, is to make it, let's say, Lot 15A of track, let's say, for this example, is 1,000 Oaks track. But either way, either convention is, is correct, as long, what's important is that the legal description, the actual legal text description, contains lots 15 and 16, or both lots, for, that's, that's the subject of this application.
I, I just want to make sure that, obviously, from a title standpoint, that it's clear enough, and as long as it makes sense in the process, so it's going to be, it's going to be labeled Lot A, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine. Nothing further.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, thank you, Mr. Chua, for the presentation. I just had one question of what we've done in the past, as far as in 2017, when I think we heard it was 251 South Skyline. I think that was the applicant. As far as the parking and staging goes, does anyone with city staff know, I think we had a discussion on that, and I think we just asked that they, if I recall right, correct me if I'm wrong, that we, they just formulated a staging plan and just got it checked out by city staff, and I think that was the one condition I think we added. I just wanted confirmation on that. I mean, it seemed to pass muster there, and it, it certainly, the same issues are creeping up again. I don't know if any, anyone city staff knows can confirm this, or?
I, I think I remember, we didn't make any changes in the conditions as far as staging is concerned. It did occur that we discussed that. However, it was, it was, I think, brought out, if I could remember it right, that the staging would be taken, the staging issue would be addressed during the plant check for grading plans, for grading.
Yeah.
So, when this, and, and the same as this project, when this project goes through a grading project, grading plans, plant check, the staff will also ask the applicant for locations of the staging area.
Okay.
So they will have to define that.
Okay. I just wanted to also pose that question, put it out to this whole body, so that it can be a possible point of discussion later. It seemed to be something that worked in the past, and something I would certainly be thinking worked for this particular project. Nothing further, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also have a few questions. I'll try not to repeat what has been brought up already. This is more of a generic question. Is this additional unit subject to Measure E at all?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Because we're not increasing any density
Okay.
Of the, the, there's no zone change, there's no increase in zone change, there's no general plan amendment, so it's not subject to Measure E.
And since we're going from two lots to one, does it add an extra available unit somewhere?
No, no, because this, the designation under the general plan, the general plan is not changing.
Okay.
So.
All right, just was a curiosity, since that seems to be a topic of discussion lately. Regarding the on-street parking, I noticed that the paved width is quite narrow. Mr. Bussel, is the paved width of the road the existing right-of-way, or does the existing right-of-way extend beyond the pavement?
Yes, the, the existing right-of-way is wider than the pavement. I think the pavement's 10 to 12 feet, and I believe the right-of-way is 25 feet in that area.
If, if that's the case, then why is it not required to extend paving to the edge of the right-of-way?
We, we've talked about doing that, having each applicant do that, but we were trying to, at one point, we feel like it's imperative to have a master plan for that area, and then, as we have a master plan for the area and determine what's going to happen, then we, we determine whether we're going to want to have curb, gutter, sidewalk in that area. As of now, we're saying that this is going to remain a rural-feeling road like that, and we're going to keep it narrow, we're not going to widen it. So until our, our plan changes, our master plan for roads changes, we're going to leave it at that, that width for now.
Along that line, I know the current code requires 20 feet unobstructed width for fire department access, paved, all-surface width, and this road currently doesn't have it, so I can't ask you to speak for the fire department, but if we know that that's a requirement, and this is a substandard road, it would seem to behoove us to catch what we can as we go along to require that. And I can understand, you know, the need to do it piecemeal because of the cost, but when you talk about safety, and we do have a number of people that live upstream from this house, it seems like we're not, you know, being proactive when perhaps we could. Is, is that not part of the discussion with the fire department?
No, we haven't had that discussion with the fire department. I think if the fire department would have required the road to be widened, we would have, we would have worked with them to try to get this road widened, especially as we go up to the other property at the very end of Skyline. There was never a discussion of widening the road.
Would it be reasonable to have no parking along the road to make sure that what pavement is available is accessible to the fire department at all times?
Yes, I think that would be.
Okay.
I think there are, I believe there are some no-parking signs along that road. I, I may be wrong, but I think we, we discussed this with the last applicant that came in, and I believe that we, we were asking for no-parking signs to be installed along Skyline, and I believe there are no parking signs on Skyline.
Okay. I happen to be driving up Ventu Park Road today, which I know is outside the city jurisdiction, but it's in the county, but every so often, it says, "No parking on pavement." I, I would suggest, along with what Commissioner Newman was expressing concern over parking, that perhaps we include something like that beyond just for construction, but on a permanent basis, no parking on the pavement, which I know, because it's a rural road, perhaps is not going to create much of an issue, but here, we've now had a home each year for the last two years, and as we continue to add home after home, at some point, it's going to become an issue, and I suggest we take care of that potential while we have the opportunity, which I know that's a road, lengthwise road issue, which is not incumbent upon this particular homeowner to take care of all that, but it seems like it would be the right thing to do, to make sure that that road is accessible at all times.
So, Chair, to be clear, that you're, you're asking staff to look into having the analysis done to put no parking on, on this street? Or are you, are you making it a condition for this one person to put no parking?
No, I think for, obviously, the entire road is not the responsibility of this homeowner.
Correct.
But it would certainly be who of the city, I think, to look at that.
Okay.
But what I do believe, in conjunction with what Mr. Newman was saying, was that road should be, should remain accessible at all times, even during construction.
Understand, and I think we can talk about a condition once we're done with, with your questions with the staff, and then we can talk about that condition before the applicant comes up.
Okay, thank you. I did have another question regarding drainage. I know there is a, an existing channel on the property, which seems to sweep along to the side of the road and doesn't really get onto the road, I guess unless we have excessive rainfall. But I did notice in the report, and I don't, or maybe it was one of the conditions, I'd have to refer to it, but there is a condition that stated that the flow should be directed either to a drainage conveyance or to the public right-of-way, which would be fine if there was a conveyance on the public right-of-way, but there's not. There is no curb and gutter, so why are we requiring discharge of the storm flow onto a street that cannot accommodate it?
Yes, you're right. On the, on the east side of that property, there's a, there's a natural swale that runs through that property, and then as it, as it gets down towards Skyline, it turns and goes east and runs along Skyline. And what we're asking this applicant to do is, since they're filling up that, filling into that swale, and they're going to be rerouting around the house, we want them to continue the, the flow around their property and continue into that natural swale.
Will that be possible, to direct all of the flow off this property into that existing natural swale?
We believe it will be. That's why we have a condition in there, we're asking for a drainage study. It's not a very intensive drainage study, but we want to see what off-site flow is coming onto this property. The top of the ridge is, is not very far from this property.
Right.
So there's not a lot of off-site flow coming in, on here, but we want to make sure that whatever off-site flow is coming on, that it is getting safely routed around the project and into this, and it stays in this natural swale.
And with the impervious section, but primarily the driveway, I guess, because the gutters, rooftop gutters would go into some type of a catchment system, but the surface flow off the driveway, that's going to go right to the roadway. Will that be able to accommodate it?
Yes.
I guess, because there's no, there's no curb and gutter there.
Right, it's, it's going to surface flow out onto the AC, and then if I remember right, I think that road is, is sloped away from this project, so it'll go on the other side of the road and flow down that road.
Would, would that create an erosion concern?
It's not going to create any more of a hazard than's already there right now.
Okay, and that will be revealed in the study?
Yes.
Question regarding condition number 16 regarding building materials, on the report, page 15, refers to building materials consisting of cedar siding, vertical and horizontal, and further back in the fire department conditions, see if I can catch that. Condition number 57 on page 22, the air conditioning requires shall meet hazardous fire area building code requirements. And I happen to know that one of those fire requirements is that the exterior construction is fire-resistant, complete the code. So if it's determined that the cedar siding does not meet those codes, when the fire department's reviewing the plan check, what, what happens? Do they have to come back to the planning staff to submit a different type of siding?
Yes, they do.
If it's not compliant?
Yes, they do.
Okay.
Yeah, this will be, yeah.
I just want to make sure that, that they don't have to come back to the planning commission?
No.
Okay, so that'll be resolved administratively?
It will be resolved administratively, yes.
Okay, all right, thank you. And on condition number 25 regarding landscape standards, actually, in 26, landscaping and irrigation, I noticed that there's requirement that the landscaping be drought-tolerant, low-watering, using plants, but there's nothing reference to being fire-resistant landscaping. Is that not a requirement?
It's not a requirement under our landscape ordinance. Our landscape ordinance just calls out a landscape that's drought-resistant, so we didn't impose that.
Wouldn't there be concern that a drought-resistant landscaping would also be prone to fire?
Well, that's true. So it's one or the other.
Well, since this is in a high-fire hazard area, it seems that that would be an area of concern.
Yeah, if the, if the planning commission deems it, you know, it be beneficial, then, you know, it, it's something that the planning commission can totally impose.
Well, I would suggest that it should be drought-tolerant and fire-resistant. Nothing is fireproof, I understand that.
It's noted.
On condition number 38, page 18, reference to water service, the, there's a requirement that the applicant design and construct a water bell, water well, if I read the report correctly, isn't that already been completed? That they've already installed a water well?
Yes, the, the well's already been constructed. I think at the point where this condition was written, we wanted to make sure that they had a permit to operate the well.
Okay, so I just want to make sure that there was not a second well required?
No, there's only one well.
Okay, all right, thank you. And condition number 39, fire-water service, there's reference that they provide water for the fire sprinkler system. Realize that there, as noted in condition 38, a service pressure of only 45 PSI at 966 feet. However, this pad elevation is 1018 feet, and able to be served by domestic water service. How is it that the fire-water service can be provided if the, if the water pressure is inadequate for domestic?
We, we have two standards for water service in the city. For domestic use, the standard is 45 PSI, and for firefighting service, the standard is 20 PSI. So the water line that's in Skyline right now currently can provide fire flow service to all of these lots, all the way up to the very end. It just doesn't have enough pressure to provide for the domestic use. That's why the, the well is being provided for domestic, and the, and the water line is being provided for firefighting service.
Okay, and if there is any deficiency in water pressure, would the design, designer then institute some type of pumping system for that?
There, can I, I would, I would like to interject a little bit here. I don't know if any commissioner was part of the project where the brusher project was approved. This is on foothill. They're three single-family homes. Back then, when they have insufficient fire water, water pressure, what they do is they install a firefighting, a tank, a water tank for the sole purpose of firefighting. This tank will have a bladder inside that will inflate to provide pressure, that require pressure for firefighting. So that's an option that may be imposed by the fire department if this project is deemed to be, will have insufficient fire flow.
Okay, so in other words, Mr. Chua, that's, that is an option to meet the standards. It's not a mandate at this process, but as they do the reviews, whether it be for the building construction or fire protection systems, they make that determination at that point?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And, Mr. Bussel, I noticed there's reference to the distance to wastewater being excessive, and therefore, they're allowed to install septic system. Where would the closest stormwater conveyance connection be in this area?
Stormwater conveyance would be at the, at the 101. It's going to, it would go down into, to Willow Lane, and then there's a culvert that runs underneath 101 in that low spot right there.
So there's, there's nothing, no infrastructure for stormwater within the
No.
The South Skyline area, then?
No.
Okay. And again, so we just rely on surface flow at that point?
Yes.
I think that's all my questions. Did I generate any other questions or concerns from the commissioners? If not, we have a couple of comment, a couple of speaker cards. Mr. Anselmo, I see you have for questions only, but I know Mr. Newman at least voiced, he has a question, so if you please come to the dais and state your name and city of residence, please. You have a whole 15 minutes to share all of the information you want, and if that's nothing, that's absolutely fine. If you just want to state you're here for questions, that's fine, just
Sure.
Your name and city of residence for the record, please. Your name and city residence for the record, please.
Oh, yeah. My name is John Anselmo. I live in Thousand Oaks. And, yeah, I mean, we've been working on the project for quite a while. So I am here for questions, if anybody has any.
Okay. Commissioner Newman, if you would care, please go right ahead.
Thank you. And good evening, Mr. Anselmo. We've been discussing a couple of possible changes to the application tonight so far. One of them has to do with parking of construction vehicles while the work's being done. And the other is in some way ensuring that fire department vehicles can get through in the need of case of fire emergency. If we make any changes, we're obligated to ask you, are you okay with those changes?
I guess for the, for the first one on the, on the fire department, you know, access, I think the right-of-way on the street you said was 25 feet. Is that correct? But the paved was, was only 10, 10 to 12? Do we know the exact? Okay. I do know that on the, on site, I'm not sure how much gravel shoulder there is on each side, but I've been on that street many times. I've parked along the street. I've parked, pulled up onto the property. One of the reasons we have the, the property setting, set back a little bit was because there was access to the well. So there's a natural slope right there
Yes.
That we would like, you know, if, if need be, since the well is our, our water source, for a sizable truck that actually drilled the well to make it to, to that point. So as far as construction vehicles go, I would foresee coming up with a staging plan that was onsite, that was on the property. If it can, you know, fit maybe two or three of those trucks, I would think that there'd be ample space to do that. So as far as the staging area goes, I'm pretty confident we would have, you know, enough, enough space for three or four construction trucks. We could keep it off the street.
Okay. So if the conditions were modified in some way to indicate that as a requirement, you'd be, you'd be okay with that?
Yeah, I'd be, I'd be fine with that.
Great. Great. And then, and then as well, this isn't set in stone, but certainly from Chair Nichols' questions, we've been talking about some modification of the road to be determined, whether it's some no parking signs or, or something to, to mandate clear passage for fire department vehicles.
Sure. Sure. You know, the no parking signs, I'm okay with that. I know that one of the, let's see, there was a construction that just finished maybe within a couple years that's up the street.
Yeah.
And so, you know, without parking along the street, I don't think we'd be obstructing any fire department access. No parking signs is fine with me. I don't, is that your question? Or you said some kind of alteration to the street?
Yeah. I mean, I mean, if, if the commission determines it's going to make a specific change, you would, we'd have you back up to be sure you were okay with that change. But it sounds like conceptually you're okay with
Well, I guess it depends on what the change is.
Of course. Right. And, and we would ask you about a specific change, but at a high level, just conceptually, it sounds like you're saying you'd be okay with something that would allow clear passage
Clear passage. Sure.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Anselmo. I do have one question. This is regarding your drainage. And I don't know if you have this completely memorized, but it appears as though on the drainage plan, that there is like a bench drain that goes around the entire property, or the developed portion of it. And it appears as though that there's going to be a, like a little catchment area with some stones and such before it goes into the existing natural swale and continuing on down the road. Where it comes across, is there going to be some type of a pipe underneath the driveway where it gets from one side of the driveway over to the other to go into that swale?
I don't know if there is. I, I, you know, my questions brought up to the engineer had mostly to do with, you know, the route of the water that went around. I think his concern was getting, getting the water down into the natural swale and, and, and being able to have a plan for the drainage before it left our property. I think that was, that was the major concern. I, I'm not sure about the pipe. I'd have to look at, look at the plans and really, you know, find out if there was something that went under the driveway, which there very well could be.
Okay. Very good. Any other questions for Mr. Anselmo? Mr. Heer?
So, sir, while you're up there, and I normally don't address the applicants, but in this case, I'm sure you're aware that there were various conditions that were placed in the documents that you received. And you heard tonight that the planning commission had two concerns or two changes that they wanted to address. One of them was regarding condition number 26, which had to do with landscaping and irrigation. And in that condition, it talked about that you would install or plant drought tolerant, low water use plants. And the chair would like a condition that reads that you would actually have it drought tolerant, low water using, and fire resistant plants.
Yes.
So that's a very specific type of plant that you would find that obviously would have a label of fire resistant?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. That's, that's one condition.
I think our, our plan was to, you know, keep it fairly, you know, water, I mean, just having a natural landscape, but at the same time, I can understand the fire resistant. So yes, we're, we're fine with that.
All right. And the next condition would be the, the next one in order. So it would be at the very end. And we've already talked about this. You heard the commissioners speak about it. And again, you mentioned it already. And that has to do with before the issuance of the grading permit. And so for the chair, if I may, my draft of the condition would be, before issuance of a grading permit, applicant shall submit a construction plan, phasing plan for, that will address onsite parking and/or offsite staging for construction vehicles, including all workers. Plan shall include requirement for any and all encroachments on public right-of-way. And so that, it would be the condition that I would have that you would add to direct. Again, it talks about the construction, whether you have it in a phasing where it's going to be on a different site somewhere, and then they all go on the day of the construction work that they go to the project, or as you noted, you might be able to have them all on the site. So you have to have that plan ready before you get the grading permit. And so that would be the additional condition that we would ask that you have to understand. And you would have to affirm that you're okay with that condition in front of the planning commission.
Yeah. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? All right. Thank you. As we continue our discussion, you will have an additional chance to come up to the dais if there's anything that disturbs your interest. Thank you. I do have one additional card, Mr. Marty McCumber. And if you care, step down to the dais. And while he's coming, just for a point of transparency, as why I was on the site today, come on down. As I was on the site today, Mr. McCumber stopped by, asked me if I was a property owner. I just let him know I was with the planning commission, was reviewing the site. He expressed some concerns about drainage and erosion. And I suggested that those were good questions to come and speak to the planning commission and bring those up. And so he's here. So, Mr. McCumber, you could just, for the record, your name and city residence for the record, please.
It's Marty McCumber, Thousand Oaks. Is that what? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear it.
Yes, that's fine. And just feel free. You've got five minutes, sir.
My biggest concern was the drainage. And I think that was, you guys talked about it, because you, you were concerned, Mr. Newman, that, you know, what was the difference in the dirt? And the dirt, the difference in the dirt is what they're filling up that ravine with. So my big concern is, is where's all this water going to go? And I noticed that when both of you are talking, I hear a lot of, you know, like, I think the fire department will be okay with that. I think the road tilts this way. I, I don't
Sir, could you just please address the planning commission, not the, not the staff? Thank you.
I'm sorry, what?
We could please address the planning commission?
Okay.
Yes.
But what I'm, what I'm trying to say here is I keep hearing a lot of, I think this is going to be okay. You know, all these things that you guys are all asking these questions. And probably half the answers were, were not definite. Everything is like, I think this is going to be all right. I just wanted to kind of point that out because, because the drainage thing was my big concern. And evidently, you're, you're okay with it. You're okay that somebody thinks it might be okay. And nobody's sure that there's going to be a pipe running under the driveway when there should be. But, you know, like I said, it just seems like there's a lot of things that are going on, on all the aspects of this, that nobody seems to be real clear about. And I just hope you take that into account.
Mr. Parker?
If I may, Chair. Thank you. That's a wonderful comment. Everything in terms of the plan and the project at this stage is sort of conceptual until the planning commission makes a determination. If they make a determination and the affirmative and approve the project, there'll be further study specifically as relates to drainage to work out the details of those issues. Typically, at this stage, there's not a final answer. It's just conceptual. So what Mr. Bustle from the city's public works department and the engineer provided by the applicant has done is they've studied the site preliminarily to figure out that it could work. And they will refine that plan and details to get approval from the city's public works department before they move forward. And at that point, the concerns that you have right now related to drainage would be addressed.
Okay.
And Mr. McCumber, if I could add to that as well. Again, as, as Mr. Parker said, at the planning commission level, we're not here to go through the, the details of it. We like to make sure what the issues are, what the things are that concern us, and make sure that there is some, some mechanism in place to address those. You may have heard me, you know, research, asked for research on the draining, drainage plan and drainage study. Mr. Bustle said, yes, there will be a study. At the end of that study, they will come up with some conclusions as to how the design needs to be properly implemented. So we're not here to review that design. We're just making sure that there's something in place to take care of it. And the staff will make sure that that's taking place. That's what we're trying to do here. But appreciate your comments. And again, you're always welcome to come back to staff and address them with any questions as they go through the process. Staff, do you have any, I have no further comments, no further public speaker cards. Staff, do you have any comments in response to what you heard from the applicant or the speaker?
Yes. As far as the drainage study, I mean, that we, that's why we are doing the drainage study, as you, as you pointed out. So I just want to make sure that Mr. McCumber knows that, that study will be looking at all this. We'll be looking at the off-site that's coming on to the site, how it's getting through the site, and make sure it's not going to be causing any downstream damage as well. So that will be looked at, as you, as you rightly said, during the final design.
And, and also for the record, just so you know, Mr. McCumber could probably give you an idea of what a 41-year flood would look like, since he's been up there for 41 years, but maybe not 100-year study. Mr. Pletcher, I saw your name flash up there. Okay. All right. So with that, no further comments? Any further questions of the applicant? Mr. Anselmo, you have the opportunity to come back to the dais and address to the planning commission for additional five minutes, if you have anything else you'd like to convey. Okay. That said, no further comments from staff or from the public. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'm open to comments, questions, or a motion from the commissioners. Commissioner Newman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I want to thank staff and the applicant and Mr. McCumber for your presentations, your comments this evening. I support this project. I think, well, this is, as staff has noted, a conceptual thing at this point. It is pretty far along. And there are mechanisms to take care of issues that are clearly of concern to us all, including not only drainage, but fire protection as well. This is a sensitive area. Personally, I like the architecture of the house very much. That's not something we sit in judgment of here, but nice job. So I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve PPD 2018-70038, PMW 2018-70252, and UUW 2018-70277, based on the findings and with the modifications, as noted by Mr. Heer. Plus, earlier today, I did send Mr. Parker and Mr. Heer corrections on a number of typos that are in the connection. There is one material correction as well. The resolu, the model resolution for the PMW case has the wrong date on it. It says September 10th. It should be today's date. So with those modifications, I move that we pass these case numbers. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And Mr. Newman, just to assist the recording secretary, could you push the motion button, please?
I've done so. Thank you.
Commissioner Pletcher?
Before we move on, I just want to request that we hear one more time the, the conditions as we amended them. Sorry, Patrick.
For 26, we are going to add, as part of the drought resistant plants, we're going to just add the terms fire resistant plants. For the next in order, it will be, before issuance of a grading permit, applicant shall submit a construction phasing plan that will address onsite parking and/or offsite staging for construction vehicles, including all workers. Plan shall include requirement, requirements for any and all encroachments on public right-of-way.
Mr. Heer, is that a new condition?
That would be a new condition. That's why it's next in order. So
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pletcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Mr. Heer, for the, just wanted to reaffirm that I heard everything and heard everything correctly. I certainly am going to support the project. I too, I mean, I was very happy and excited, although, yeah, we do, we certainly do not sit in judgment of what a house is inevitably going to look like. But I think you've presented a very, a great project that, and you're doing something with a piece of land like many that have come before us last year. Really put together a nice project. And again, like last year, we had drainage concerns and parking concerns, which are all well addressed and have been addressed here in both years. You've been very open to the conditions we've placed upon you today regarding the fire resistant plants, as well as the parking and staging plan. And I think you realize, public safety is probably one of our number one concerns here, especially in that area of town. It just seems to be fire and water, fire and water, and fire and water, just over and over again. But it's something that certainly, I can assure you that none of us up here take lightly. And we realize that as things progress the way they have been, we need to be more and more conscientious, conscientious of them. So with that, I'm certainly going to support the projects, including all the conditions and additional corrections that Commissioner Newman pointed out to the, to Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Commissioner McMahon? Commissioner Lanson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I commend you for the plans as well. It's great to see somebody wanting to make the best use of property that they can out of the circumstances. I also believe that Mr. McCumber makes some good points with regard to some of the issues. The difficulty, again, we're limited in terms of what we're looking at, and that whether or not it complies with the minimum necessary to go to the next stage. And again, they've satisfied that requirement. With that said, I know that they're going to go out of their way to make sure that they satisfy all of those issues, especially since they've presented those things here today. And the staff will make sure that those issues are addressed. But I want to also thank you, Mr. McCumber, for coming today. So I will also support the motion.
Thank you very much. If I understand correctly, that if not for the fact that this project were involving 25% slope, you wouldn't even be here today. This would be handled completely by the staff. So lucky for you, you got the additional scrutiny of the five of us. Seems like you passed, so job well done. And I know with this particular area, in fact, I was discussing with Mr. McCumber this morning, you know, it's one of those holdouts in town, one of our legacy areas, as I call it, that kind of reflects old Thousand Oaks. And yet we still have lots that are being developed. And it's a bit of a challenge to kind of hold on to the old and yet prepare it for the new and accommodate, you know, these new projects as they come along, and trying to make it fit somehow, just as we were discussing were discussing about the roadway, you know, certainly is not, you know, looking like some of the other roads around town. That's part of the joy and part of the issues of living in that area. You know, it does have the drainage issues, it does have the rural flavor to it, a little bit out the back corner, so to speak, of the city, and yet, it's home. And so we try to, you know, accommodate all those. And appreciate staff pulling together and refreshing our memory on what some of the requirements are, but I think overall, it's, you know, it'll be a big challenge, because anytime you start from ground zero, you know, things pop up. So appreciate your bringing this forward to us. So with that, with the recording secretary, please prepare us for a vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. And if there is anyone that has any concerns about this, you are welcome to share those concerns with the community development director within 10 days in writing. To appeal, yes. Make sure I get the right language in there. Thank you, Mr. Heer. Okay, now we're on to our next item, department reports. Mr. Parker, do you have any reports to share with us this evening?
None this evening.
Thank you. Next item, commission comments and/or AB 1234 reports. No comments, okay. Oh, wait, we got one, here we go. Commissioner Lanson, they're gradually showing up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I unfortunately, or fortunately, I'm celebrating my 30th wedding anniversary, and I'm taking my bride on a much-deserved trip, so I will unfortunately not be here for our October
Very good. Can we all join you? Commissioner Pletcher?
And was that fortunately or unfortunately? Fortunately or unfortunately? Okay. No, I just wanted to ask staff, I mean, this neighborhood continues to pose an interesting question and challenge each time we have an applicant. Is there any plans just in the future to address either the drainage or the power line issue, or even the road widening issue? Because there's still some lots that I think could be developed over the next few years, and I just want to pose that and see where we're at on really addressing the larger issues that were the topics of conversation tonight. Thank you.
I will just say, Chair, that hearing the comments and seeing Mr. Bustle, that we will ensure, staff will ensure, that it is at least brought up at the next land use meeting to talk about, or one of the next land use meetings, to talk about this location, and whether there are any type of plans at this stage to investigate and analyze this area as to whether there can be other infrastructure improvements.
I would appreciate that. I guess part of my bringing that up is, are there milestones or thresholds where you realize when it gets to a certain point, it's like, okay, now is the time we have to do something? Is it when a certain percentage of the lots are developed, that the road is so dilapidated that if we're going to pave it, we might as well pave it to the full width and add curbs? What are the determinations? Not that it's the planning commission's, you know, role or auspice to say something like, or to make that determination, but more out of curiosity, so we get these issues that creep up in these types of areas, at least we're informed and know how those are addressed. Commissioner McMahon?
Along those same lines, I have a question, and I don't even know if this can be answered or not, but when I think about all the fires that have been happening around California, a lot of it seems to be around power lines in areas where brush catches fire, and where that area is, it's rustic, there's a lot of brush, there's a lot of native plants, and the power lines are above ground, and is this something we want to move towards undergrounding them for future safety? Or is this something that the electric company just does or doesn't do?
If I can start that answer. It's something that's currently a concern throughout the state of California, and the various public utilities responsible for providing power in above-ground power lines are actively putting together plans to sort of address that very issue. They're working on legislation to go through the state to help them along those lines, and that's something the League of California Cities is watching and trying to provide a relevant comment on.
Thank you, good to know.
Any other comments? I just wanted to mention that I was able to attend the Sappley Trails Community Park ribbon-cutting on Saturday, which was very exciting, and that to be able to be a part of that process from beginning to end. Like I said, back in my former lifetime, I was actually on the planning staff here when we were developing, laying ranch, and that area was proposed as a community park. And then having gone through all the workshops and hearings and lawsuits and everything to actually get this to fruition, and then having it go to this board for approval, and now it's actually a real park, was quite thrilling to see that whole process, but also surprising at how long things like that can take, and the perseverance that the Park District in particular has put through to make that happen. But they've done a great job, it's a good showing, a lot of different, all the different groups that have the different activities out there, we're all there, a lot of officials were there, a lot of the city council members were there, Park District staff and members were there, the board members. It's a good community event for seeing things like that that go right, and because it took them a long time, but, you know, we had that before us, and so we can even say, yeah, we were part of that. So I appreciate the opportunity to be there. Anything else? Okay. Next would be staff update.
As for item 10A, we don't have anything in relation to item 10B, upcoming planning commission meetings. We don't currently have any items on the agenda for October 9th. That meeting is likely to be canceled. There are two items currently proposed for October 22nd. That will shape up in the next week or so, but as it stands, we do plan to have a meeting. It was noted that Commissioner Lanson will not be present for that particular meeting. In regards to item 10C, the planning mission schedule for next year is out and in your packet for review. Customary with past practice here, it is the Monday preceding city council planned for next year. So please take a peek and update your calendars accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Anything for the good order before I adjourn? Okay, we'll move to adjournment, and just get back here. Before we adjourn, just a shout-out to my daughter and newlywed son-in-law on Friday. Congratulations to them, as they're off on their honeymoon, Emily and Chris Thrower. And with that, we will plan for adjournment to October 22nd, 2018, at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, have a good evening.
Thank you.